Welcome, everybody. Our apologies for being late. I'd like to reconvene the Public Works Session of the Rockville Center Board of Education for Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. All good? Everybody approve? All right. Thank you for being with us. We'll start with Mr. Bartel's superintendent report.
Thank you, Ms. O'Shea. Just an update on COVID. We actually only have one student out on quarantine today and tomorrow, so we continue to stay very low in terms of COVID cases in the district. We are continuing to move back to normal as much as possible in terms of the instruction in the classroom, in terms of cafeteria and lunches. Each of the elementary schools does do lunch differently, so that may take a different form in each building depending on the logistics in that building. But we do have all classes eating together again, and we're doing everything we can to get back to as normal a process as we can as quickly as possible. Last week, we had the grade three to eight state tests in English Language Arts. This was the first administration of these tests in two years, so students had to get reacquainted with the process, especially grades three, four, and five who actually have not taken these exams before due to COVID. Test administration did go well at all school buildings, and even with the additional locations, readers, and added times that were required. Opt-out numbers ranged from about 20% in third grade up to over 70% in eighth grade. It was interesting to kind of follow. Each grade level had a different percentage number kind of increasing as the grades go up. Because of the time and space constraints and the unknown number of students taking the exam at the middle school, because we were not sure how many were going to be opting out, we were not able to hold a shortened bell schedule in the second part of the testing days at the middle school. But based on the opt-out rates and parents indicating that the children would also be opting out for the math exams, we will be able to schedule shortened classes on the math exam days later this month in the middle school. We did not reach out to parents this year requesting opt-out information as we have in the past, as we were hoping to get more students taking the exam so that we could have better comparison numbers for our district when looking at the overall state and county data on these exams. These exams for ELA are long, and they do provide some challenges for some of our students because of the length of the exams. I also want to talk today, and it'll be the first item in our discussion, regarding a problem that's being promulgated through social media posts in our community. We have some individuals who have obtained through Freedom of Information requests letters written by other community members to school administrators and the responses to those letters, and have posted some of them on social media. This practice is a form of cyberbullying and must stop. Everyone is entitled to their own opinions, but there should be a certain level of respect and civility maintained. The district has made great strides in addressing mental health. Cyberbullying among adults as well as students undermines all that we seek to accomplish in this arena for individuals to have peace of mind. Parents should have the right to address questions to teachers, building administrators, and central administration without the fear that their neighbors or other community members will be asking to see those communications. Freedom of information requests were never intended for these purposes, but that appears to be what some community members have begun to use it for. This is having an impact on our staff, as staff members are now reticent to provide informal responses or opinions or any answers to some parent letters. Everybody needs to be advised that the district will review all Freedom of Information requests with our attorneys, and any information regarding particular students will be completely redacted. Student information is protected, and the district will not release any student records or identifiable student information through a Freedom of Information request. The district must comply with the Freedom of Information law, and everyone should know that the process of responding to these requests is not without cost. In addition to our attorney's time, we have staff which must take time to process the requests, which usually includes contacting a number of other staff members to research, process, and put together requested information. These requests sometimes take many hours, days, and sometimes weeks to put together information, redact it, and process it for distribution to the requister. One recent FOIL request we had resulted in over 85,000 emails that have to be reviewed. I am imploring those members in the community who have engaged in this conduct of making random requests under the Freedom of Information law to refrain from these requests in the future and to not use any of the correspondence obtained for social media posting. Please maintain a civil decorum and respect each other's opinions on all social media platforms and in any debate which may ensue. These recent social postings are not reflective of the district community for which I have worked for over 20 years. I hope that we can return to discussion of the positive things that are happening in our schools and that everyone can treat one another with respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bartel. Any questions? Allison, it might be a good time.
Sure.
Allison is from our attorney's, Lamet Branarsky.
So I was asked to give an overview of the Freedom of Information law and how it works. So there's a form that the district has for anyone to request documents, and because the school district is a public entity, there is a presumption of access to those records. And there are set reasons set forth in the Freedom of Information law for reasons why you can redact information from the records. So what happens when a FOIL request comes in, it goes to the district clerk, and within about five business days, there's acknowledgement of receipt. And then the records that are responsive to that FOIL request will come over to my office, and we carefully look at every single word and every single piece of paper that is responsive to that request, and we compare that to the permissible reasons for redacting the information that are set forth in the law. We make those redactions, and it goes back to the district to then respond to the person who is requesting it. As Mr. Bartel's indicated, it's a time-consuming process because every single word has to be looked at to make sure that things that must be redacted actually are. Once the information is released to the person who has requested it, of course, the district has no control over it, which is why Mr. Bartel's made the comments that he did. So is there anything else you would like me to reference in terms of the procedure?
Just to clarify that what's redacted is what's legally required by law to redact.
Yes, there is a lengthy section of the public officer's law that outlines the purposes and the reasons, and there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of opinions on when you actually can redact, and that's what we are looking at when we make the redactions. They're in accordance with FOIL.
And now, can the district act over and above that? They'll send you everything, the firm will redact it, whoever. It comes back to the district. Can the district be more restrictive than that?
No, the rules are the rules for FOIL. So there are things that you can redact and things that you must redact. The things that you must redact, like student information, there's no choice. That cannot be released.
No, so can we ask for more stringent requirements before it goes out? Or do we have the opportunity to do that?
No.
Can we deny something going out that maybe is half-redacted from the attorney, but the school district may feel that it is too revealing to let go?
No. What we provide to you is what you're allowed to do.
Is what we're obligated to do.
Right.
I think one of my concerns was some things are not blatantly identifiable, right? So somebody's name is clearly identifiable by the name. If a parent's writing an email about their child, and the parent's name is not redacted or their email address, or some portion of that email is not redacted, and they're speaking about their child, that is identifiable to that student. Because, yes, they could have seven children, but they could have one child. So things like that, or things like titles people hold in organizations so their names are redacted but their title remains, which is identifiable, it's like this gray area of identification. And I think that that's where a lot of questions arose out of, that how is this not identifiable? Why was this not redacted? And then there was the question of why would the district clerk not redact this, which right away, you know, we want, and I thank you for clearing that up, that this is not on the district clerk to return the FOILs, you know, the information that goes through the lawyer. So thank you for clarifying that. But I think that there is a gray area of identification, and I think that I'm interested to know how closely that that's looked at to make sure that, yes, the obvious things are done, but what about those gray things, and how are those covered?
Okay. Can I jump in first just before? So I understand about the gray area, and I've been involved in some different redactions on a number of different requests from some attorneys and investigations that we've done. My position is if there's any reference to a student in an email, I'm redacting the entire email. I'm not going to that effect. If somebody really is looking for a specific information, and it's real information about a particular child, and it's something we're required to provide, they can challenge us, and we'll go back with the attorneys. And if it's something we need to provide, we will. But on the face of it, I don't believe people in the community are foiling us for student information. And based on the fact that they now have some that are posted, some correspondence has been posted, I'm not going to run that risk in the future. So anything with any reference to a student, the entire email will get redacted.
All right.
Somebody wants it, it will be challenged, and then we'll have to go through and see if there is anything in there.
I think that's a big concern for people. You know, it's one thing for adults to have issues with adults, but when their children are involved, there's just a level of, I have a real level of discomfort where information that people are communicating with their child's teacher or their principal about their child or their child's feelings, to what you said in your statement is so true. People are going to stop communicating. People are going to stop reaching out. Students are, you know, people are going to be too fearful to have regular conversation because of something like this, and that really upsets me. So I just really want to protect our students first and foremost, and those relationships that our parents should have with teachers and administrators should be protected, should be private. And I'm bothered that there are a lot of parents that are now feeling that they don't want to communicate anymore. And this, to me, in the age of what we're living through, is a problem.
I agree, and I know many of our staff, I know our principals, our teachers, other administrators, everybody is now feeling kind of violated by this. Because these are not correspondence that you would expect to see posted on a social media site. So I want to make sure we take the absolute careful tact and not make any mistakes with this going forward. And I want people to feel comfortable that they can communicate with their teachers and principals and not have to worry about something that they write about their child showing up in a FOIL request.
Thank you.
Could we just differentiate between a parent writing in about their child? Obviously, that should be redacted, and I think the attorneys would have redacted anything that had to do with a particular child. If there is a group of people writing in, and they're calling themselves whatever they're calling themselves, whatever the group is, and the group of people are advocating for specific changes or something in particular, and a number of people have signed that letter as part of a group, and they're lobbying for whatever they're lobbying for, I don't know that there's a right to privacy, once that has been written, to lobby for a particular position. If PTA, for example, wrote a letter, and they took a vote, and by vote, this was their stance, and they wrote the letter as PTA, and PTA did not do this, I'm just using it because it's a group that everybody is familiar with, if they wrote in a letter saying, "Rockville Center PTAs support the budget, and we want you to do this," because they took an appropriate vote, and people signed it, you're no longer signing it as a private person, and it's not about your child, it's about advocating for a policy change, and you're a group, and you've assigned a letter to the group. Now, I know some people are saying that these letters that have been posted, that perhaps they didn't know what the content was, and they were misled. That's a separate issue, separate and apart. And you should be well aware, when you're signing something and you're putting your name to it, that you've read it, and you understand it, and you understand what you're putting your name to. But I do think there's a difference between a parent writing a teacher, or a principal, or an administrator, or someone to say, "My child is having this issue." That would not be released. I don't think that would be appropriate, and I don't think the attorneys would allow something like that to be released.
Yes, I would agree. And letters, as you've explained, or as you were just talking about, would be foil-able. They're not involving students, they're involving some request that's being made of the district. Personally, I don't like the idea that, you know, once that document gets out there, it gets posted on social media. I don't think that's an appropriate thing to have happen, but that would be a document that would be able to be foiled.
Right. And it's able to be foiled, but it's what people are doing with the document that I think becomes problematic, because then people are making inferences from one thing to another, from this person to another, from this group to another. What's the intended purpose of taking the FOIL and posting it somewhere? What ramifications are there on that cyberbullying? What role does, what recourse or ramifications does the district feel for releasing that information if that is then used for bad, for, you know, with malice? You know, it feels a responsibility of the district at some point, and I think people come back to us of, you know, look what happened now, and why it's being used for this purpose, I can't understand, but it does feel like it comes back to us at the district level. And I don't understand it, but I don't know what legally, if somebody takes that information and uses it for some, again, a bad purpose, what is the recourse on that?
It's public information. So someone's asking for it from you, you happen to be the keepers of the information, and if a FOIL request comes in, you're obligated to provide the information, perhaps no redactions, perhaps with redactions. How someone uses it is unfortunately out of your hands. I think part of the downside here, too, is the people who are putting documents and sending documents to the district probably did so not realizing that someday one person or more people would post it somewhere.
It would be the same as someone taking a clip from a board meeting and playing it if it was, for whatever reason. It's public. It's, you know, I'm not defending the actions, but I'm saying it's public information. We legally can't stop it.
You have to provide it. You can't control what someone does with it at that point.
But we will make every, of course, we'll make every effort to end anything with a child's name, anything that, you know, can make them easily find out who it is on the document.
And where you're permitted to redact, you have to make sure that the information is protected as much as it is allowed to be.
And have we, has children's information gotten out? Is that what's hap, because I don't do social media, I don't do Facebook, so I don't, I mean, of course, everybody sends me things, but I've never seen where information on a child's gotten out.
I've seen at least one.
Okay. That's a shame. That shouldn't happen at all.
And going back to Mrs. Hackett's point earlier, then, would that include the parent's email address?
It can include email addresses, but I can check with our FOIL people who handle those things for you.
Thank you.
Oh, so they'll take a name off but leave the email address?
Well, I think the point was made earlier by Mrs. Hackett in terms of if the text of the email gets redacted, but yet the parent's email address could be personally identifiable --
Of course, it would be.
-- as well as a title and the signature. I think that was the point of the question.
But if the body of what's redacted is really what's specific to the child, then I think the information that is, that needs to be redacted and withheld is being withheld.
Yeah. Thank you.
Unfortunately, as we try and teach our kids, don't push send, I should definitely assure that you, whatever it is, may come out and be held against you.
When somebody, when some of these results are, and you're using that example about it could turn up 85,000, you know, and that, is there any limitation on to the, how wide the search is allowed to be on something like this?
No.
I mean, so we are just expected to staff this and figure this out, even if it's resulting in over almost 100,000 search results?
Unfortunately, yes. FOIL was amended several years ago to allow you to charge for time, but it's based on a very low rate for the people who are putting the documents together. You can extend the time that you need to respond for voluminous requests, and I know sometimes it gets extended month after month after month, because that's as much as it takes. Sometimes you roll out the documents on a rolling basis so that you're at least responding as things are available and ready, they're redacted and ready to be released. Because rather than holding 85,000 documents and releasing them at once, you can roll them out as time goes on. But it's very time-consuming, it's very cumbersome.
We used to charge per page printed out for FOILs?
You can still charge per page. The more recent amendment was the fee, but it's, you know, the lowest rate of someone who could possibly be putting this, these documents together.
Yeah, but that still would be better than not recouping anything for going through that many documents, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, but they've also said if you can provide it in electronic format, we have to provide it in electronic format.
The page thing had to do more with the copying.
The copying.
Right. No, but I'm just saying, if we can, if there was some way to calculate a charge, why wouldn't we?
Everything is electronic these days, so just to hit the button, but if you have to physically copy it and hand people their physical copies, that's where the charge comes in.
Okay, so it's not so much the time to gather the --
Correct.
Okay, all right, then it doesn't make sense.
Maybe one day.
Maybe one day. It should be, you know. And that, I think, would, if people are really interested, they narrow their scope down and try and make it these, whatever, three days instead of three years.
Possibly, possibly.
I think one thing that is important to note with our new law firm and their appearances at all of our board meetings, that they have that included as part of their retainer to us. So a lot of people have been asking questions about lawyers being here. I think they're providing a wonderful service for us, but they're also doing it as part of their retainer. So that's important to note. It's not, we're not getting charged every time they show up to give us legal advice. It's part of what they do.
Or every page they do on a FOIL.
Right, but we have district resources being used on those requests. I think that needs to be, and I think Mr. Bartel's covered that, but I think it's a strain on our district's resources outside of what it's doing, whether it's in a retainer or not. I think we have to acknowledge the strain it puts on the district.
I just wanted it to be clear that it's not extra cost for the lawyers to be here, because people have mentioned that, and they're here because we want them here.
There is a cost, it might just not be in dollars.
It's an obligation to the law. You know, it's an unfortunate obligation, you know, for, I'm not going to say all of them, but for the, what is perceived to be the waste, but, you know, we're obligated to, we follow the law because that's what we have to do. All right, thank you. Allison, we've had questions. I guess since Lam started representing us, they've had concerns about how we answer our emails, you know, answer the questions that people send to us on an email. So I'd just like, I guess, to start off with what's a legal obligation or how we go about things.
Sure. So anytime all of you are having a meeting, and a meeting is a majority or more of you, so it's three out of the five, that is an open meetings law issue, so you have to technically give notice that you're going to be meeting and give people the opportunity to attend. So when you're having discussions outside of a public meeting, whether that be by email, whether it be by phone, it's still a meeting. So the concern that was raised is when an email comes in and it's addressed to the board, the board is not just one person, the board is composed of five people. So one person cannot necessarily put that response together, it needs to be a discussion among the five of you, and you figure out what the majority is going to say in response and put that response together. So the advice was to limit the discussion that is going on among the five of you, so it doesn't inadvertently become a meeting. But of course, because you need to have consensus and you won't be able to do it electronically, you'll have to get a meeting together to have that discussion. It could delay the time to respond.
So in talking to, you know, other attorneys with the firm, they recommend that we make our automatic response, word it better, you know, give it more direction, give it more, you know, definition. And in the future, at all our regular Board of Ed meetings, we have a section on the agenda that says email responses, and we kind of collaborate with all, you know, if we have 20 emails on a certain topic, we talk about that topic, try and answer all the questions that have been posed to us, have our conversation, and that will be our response to the public in the future. And this is the recommendation of the attorneys that we've hired. It wasn't something that we just decided, it was just something that they've been telling us that we've been doing it improperly for all these years.
And then to the extent that the email comes to all of you, but it's more appropriately answered by the administrator, you would continue to handle it that way?
Right.
What I think we've kind of pivoted to, based on the advice from your firm, was if someone writes the board or writes someone and CCs the board, if the issue is, say, something that Mr. Bartel's can answer or Ms. Love can answer, those people would answer, and we would see the response. And then later, at a meeting, when it's open, we could have a conversation if we felt something wasn't addressed. If it was something confidential, say, in Ms. Love's area of special ed or involved a student, we could do that in executive session if we needed to discuss something that was private as to a student. But it would be the better way to respond, rather than trying to answer individual emails with five opinions and we couldn't get together to discuss them. It's been a problem.
Right. So it would be at a properly convened meeting, whether that takes place in executive session, would depend on the content, or in a public session?
Thanks.
So that, with recommendation to counsel, they've asked that we put a line on our regular Board of Ed meetings with, I don't know how we'll word it, answers to emails or email questions or something to that effect, and we'll spend a portion of those regular meetings talking about the emails that have come in? Is that?
I can respect that, and I understand. I think fundamentally, I have a concern about communication and how this whole year has changed, because while I understand the way we have to do things, we do get a lot of volume of these letters. We're not answering them anywhere right now. We have no committees, we're not answering them on email, we're not answering them at meetings, we're not, you know, answering people at the mic. So I don't feel that we're answering anybody right now. We've taken away that kind of connection, and I think we could do a better job somehow. So I'm dissatisfied with the communication right now. I understand what we have to do, but I think that this is where work that we had done together in committees and conversations we had had with people helped to help just get communication and information out there in more ways, and now we're not, I don't see us doing it in any way now. I'm just fundamentally bothered by this and dissatisfied with it. We have people saying they're asking questions and they're not getting answered, and we have, you know, people are challenging them and saying, yes, they are, but they're not. They're not getting, and now people are concerned to write to us on top of it. So this is a problem, it needs to be fixed, and we have undone a lot of good work of communication this year, and I'm really bothered by the direction we've gone. I think we've taken away a lot.
As far as committees, our attorneys have told us that committees, unless required, are not really the appropriate way to determine issues with the board, because you're putting one or two board members with the committee. It's better to have that discussion in public.
But we're having four- and five-hour meetings, regular meetings, Mr. O'Shea, and we're still not checking off these boxes of having people feel that their questions are answered. So that's where my concern is. I'll sit here all night. If we have a seven-hour meeting, but we leave feeling like people are answered, I'm good with it. But if we're having four- or five-hour meetings, and we have no committees outside, we have no communication with different people in different parts of our district, we're not answering emails, we're not, how are we, how are we accomplishing this major goal of communicating to our public?
We are working with our attorneys to try and find the best way. If you're telling me that you want to go above what the attorneys are recommending to us, we're paying them to recommend to us, and they have made their recommendation, don't answer the emails. Restrict your committees to the way that took, you're saying, no, but the attorneys are telling us. So where am I going to?
We're falling too back, we're falling too much, in my opinion, back on the attorneys. They're giving advice, they're not telling us not to speak to They're giving advice, they're not telling us not to speak to our public, they're not telling us not to meet with people through committees, they're not telling us not to do it. They told us which ones were legally required, but they didn't say, in our policy, it says we can have ad hoc committees, that we can determine what committees we want as a board. So, what I'm telling you is, from where I'm sitting, I'm concerned that we're undoing all of those avenues at once, and we can't throw that back on the attorneys. We're still a board, we're still the community's representation, and I'm concerned that we're not communicating, that's how I feel.
When we had committees, we've had a lot of problems with the committees because people have made many comments that the committees have been cherry picked and stacked with people, so the outcome would be a certain way. And I have to say, this year, when we had reopening committee, we had reopening committees all summer, huge groups of people that met under different headings of the vast reopening committee. Parents took their time, there were Zoom meetings, all kinds of things were bantered about. And then we began school with a superintendent who told us that the schools weren't really going to open, that the grammar schools were not opening, who read narrowly the restrictions on COVID to be and, 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 not or. And we were told that the decision was made by a reopening committee. And I asked questions, Ms. Rocha asked questions, Ms. Messier asked questions about how that decision came to be, that committee, when did they meet, where did they meet? Where was that information?
We had two board members that you're mentioning that were on that committee.
And that committee did not have those discussions, and that decision can't be made by a committee. A committee is supposed to present a report to the board and the board votes. So, the problem with the committee was, there was never a vote, there was never a public discussion about the opening of schools, none of this information was discussed.
No.
And in the end, let me finish, you spoke, let me finish. In the end, the decision was made about how we were opening schools by a committee that never met, never gave a report to the board, and the board never voted on the opening of schools. We pushed back and said, why aren't the grammar schools opening? How come it's and, 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 and not or? It's not a mask and a barrier and this and that, it's or. We asked questions. Similar things happened when we were trying to decide whether or not we were going to do remote instruction, and Ms. Messier pushed very hard on remote instruction and what that would look like. The committees that have happened in the past have not done things in the appropriate manner. And so, we decided, as a board, all of us here, that we were going to discuss everything in public in an open meeting, so everyone could come to the microphone, no matter who you are in this community, whether you were invited to be on the committee or not, and you could voice your opinion. And then we could have a discussion in public.
I fully support the meetings being used for the right reasons. The purpose for me of a committee is to gain insight from various people. Having board members sit on there to be able to take that information in and bring it back to their board, that may then impact action on the board. So, again, using the reopening committee, it was made up of a diverse group of people. Two board members sat on it, did voice their opinions.
Who was the diverse group of people?
There were administrators, there were teachers, there were board members, there were parents, so.
Who selected those people?
I, I don't know, because I'm not the president.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't this year.
Okay, so the superintendent who's not here, I can't answer for, but the piece that's missing to me is, then after the committee convenes, then you bring back the information, and then the administrators would say, these are the recommendations we're making, and that's the piece you're talking about with, we never took a board action, that should have happened, right?
We never had a discussion in public, we were told.
I understand that, but that person's not here. So, that's not what I'm talking about in terms of that that board action didn't happen. What I'm concerned about is, we're, we have eliminated every opportunity outside of public meetings for people to voice their opinion, and now we're, we're getting into a portion of time where people are concerned to write in, and I'm concerned about how are we going to possibly handle the volume of those letters during the meetings when we have agenda that are three and four or five pages thick, when there's no other opportunity to communicate? That, I'm asking, just throwing it out there, I don't know that it's enough, we're trying to be transparent, I think we're being less, that's how I feel.
I think having the meetings in open, where people can come and speak about all of the issues, all stakeholders involved, we put the topics on the agenda, the topics get discussed in public, and then everyone can have their say, and then the board can take motions, instead of being told by a committee that, who knows who made it up, that this is what the district is going to do, this is the move we're making, this is the way we're going to open schools, and having to have pushback in order to actually get the grammar schools opened. All of that happens because that reopening committee did not operate the way the committee should. And we've had many conversations about the committees. In fact, last year, you were unhappy with what committees you were put on, and you were saying that you were less informed as a board member with the committee system, which is possibly why we went forward and did this in public to say, let's now have meetings where everybody can be a part of the conversation, and not just the two board members who are assigned to a committee.
Please don't put words in my mouth. My problem with the committees was that they were not equitable, and that two of us were on basically nothing, and three of us were on everything. That was my problem with the committees.
Which was the reverse of last year, when you made the committees.
As a president, as a president, I sat on three committees total.
Mrs. Barry needs to speak, please.
Thank you. Let's go back to the topic of email responses, because we're just going backwards. I think the important distinction here is when the email comes in, if it's an address to the administrator or the appropriate administrator, and we're CC'd on it, which is many, I think the appropriate course of action certainly is for that administrator to, to answer that parent or that community member. And, and I think that's an important distinction. We have to stay in our lane as a board of what we handle and what the district administration handles, and they do so really well. And every single one of them is open to our community members, and, and they're super helpful in, in any way they can be in responding to our parents. As for issues that are, are under our purview, I do think it's appropriate that we can include the next board meeting date or something in that, I would like to see what that suggested automatic response is so that we can make it as helpful as possible, point them in the right direction. So, it might take some tweaking for each date of the next upcoming meeting, or obviously distinct, distinguishing between public works and, and when there will be mic time, and just including that on the agenda. I think that's appropriate, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. And I just think that there are certain things that are better suited for the appropriate administrator to handle and not the board.
Without doubt. And that's, the attorneys recommend that the administrators do as many, if not all, the emails, but they can't, that, you know, some of it is asking the board's opinion or, you know, or reference point or something.
Yeah, which is fine, to be discussed at the next meeting, yeah.
So, I believe Mrs. Harvey has, has plans to bring us some kind of form of response that we can start to use to better inform the public of what, you know, how they will get their response to the email, and that would be an automatic response.
Yeah, you certainly don't want someone waiting a long amount of time, I think that's a major concern, we want to be as responsive as possible, but in the appropriate way.
Right, so it will be at every regular Board of Ed meeting, so it would be once a month.
I, I agree with what Mrs. Barry said, I think, I do think communication's important. I do think we, the public needs to know that we are here, we're here to listen to them and to help them. I do have concerns, obviously, with the recent ongoings on Facebook and people's hesitancy to contact the district. I think that we need to, to try to figure out how we can be better available for the public. But with regards to the email responses, you know, obviously, we have to be doing what's appropriate under the purview of, of an open meeting law. So, I'm also fine with that, and I would also be curious to see what the automatic reply is going to be, maybe even including, like, you know, if you had questions about this, needed an immediate answer, you know, just also giving people direction about who's, who's who, and where they can direct questions that we may not be able to immediately respond to.
Right. Good. We're giving you guys more. All right, we're going to go into policies now. So, we are still on, we are on stage one for booster clubs and community-based clubs. Last week, we went through some change language, but we inquired about a form to be added. The attorneys have provided us the form. Are there any questions about the lang, the way it's written now, that they changed some of the, the language again? So, this is 3260.
I think one of the questions that came up at the last meeting was a good one. I think so much of the language of these, I know, comes from Erie One Bosse, so that's probably why multiple school districts have similar looking policies. I know that was a question that came up to the mic, why does this district have one that looks like this? But to that point, this title is booster clubs and community-based clubs, and I think the booster club representatives had a question mark about that because there are districts that have multiple booster clubs. Rockville Center has a booster club. This feels like a targeted booster club related, and I don't think that that's the intention of this policy. I think that, again, a lot of the language is probably taken from Erie One Bosse, and I do think other districts have, like, a baseball booster club, a football booster club, or whatever, and here we only have the one. So, I don't know if, you know, if it makes a difference, if it's clear that this is for parent, I, I don't know, like, we've, we've been talking about this, right? But like, parent fundraising groups or whatever versus it making it sound like the booster club is somehow kind of being held to this, but not all the others, even though I know it says clubs and community-based clubs, there was some confusion there. I thought that should be clarified.
I agree, I came away from the last meeting thinking about that as well, and I think if we just retitle it perhaps, community-based clubs, and take out the booster club reference, that would fall under the umbrella of community-based club anyway, because that's what they are. In, in our district, it means something specific, but I, I think to Mrs. Hackett's point, it's, seems to me more of a generic term that was covering, you know, perhaps other districts.
The history is because the only thing we had many, many years ago was the booster club.
Singular, right.
Yeah, the singular, and in the, in the present time, we've been, we've added so many more.
Yeah, and I think back when this policy was written, it probably.
The only issue there is the booster club, I don't know how to take that out, because they do different things than fund, they fundraise for multiple teams, I don't, I don't know how, if you, if.
Well, they would still be community-based.
They would just be listed as a community-based club?
Well, well, they're already included in this.
Right, right.
So, I think to Mrs. Barry's point, it's just, and what I was trying to say as well, it's titling, it sounds like we're kind of pinpointing at this one club, but really, we only have one called a booster club, but there are all community-based or parent-based clubs that I think that this policy is covering.
So, then you're, you're recommending that the booster club, or asking the booster club become its own community?
No, I think that they're just included in this without having to be in the title is what, what I'm thinking.
But then, like, for example, like, for entrusted agency, they have every club, I don't know, how would that work? What is the, the booster club?
Booster club has their own funds, we don't have a fund for the booster club.
Right, so they hold all their own money, they do most of it for the scholarships at the end of the year.
I would liken them to a PTA organization, right? They're outside of our district, is that correct? I mean, so, I think this title is confusing, is my point. I mean, that would almost be like having PTA included in this policy where they're functioning as their own entity. And I, and again, I think that that's just an error of these policies being written and shared and, you know, trying to, but we have to tailor it to what we have here, and I just don't think that it fits, this doesn't fit the way it works here for me.
So, you're, you're asking that it's just, it just reads community-based clubs?
Right. Are you asking that the booster club fall under the larger umbrella of community-based clubs, or that the booster club be outside of this policy altogether?
Well, I guess it depends on what, what is different in terms of if the booster club is going to provide scholarships to the district, Mr. Bartels, does that come through gifts?
Should come through gifts, yes.
But it doesn't now.
It doesn't now.
Is it, because that's the way, is that the way that it's?
I'm not sure if they make the payments directly to the students' scholarships, or if it comes through, it doesn't come through the district.
No, they write, usually, like, if, yes, the check is written to the student, I'm, I'm assuming it's a booster club check. Does anybody know?
So, that's not coming to the district then?
Doesn't, does not come through the district.
So, that does not have to be gifted.
It's not a school district check.
It's not coming to the district, and then the district writing checks out, so that would not have to come through as a gift, is the answer.
But that's a scholarship. If the booster club is going to raise funds and they're going to try to give the funds to the district in order to buy a fence or a pitching mound or whatever it is they're going to buy, that has to come as a gift through the district, that's the way the old policy read.
That would have to be a gift, yes.
Right, so I think that that, they, they would fall under the community-based club in that regard, if that's the case, but because I think 90% of their money does go to scholarship, right, I mean, not everything they do is going to apply here, if that's the way they're doing it with their scholarship.
Yeah, the scholarship goes directly to the student, it doesn't come to the school.
Right, I just don't want there to be an expectation, because they're included here like this pinpointed, that that's what's expected when that's not the way that that would work, but fine, and, you know, an item is a different, that, that would be where I think they would have to follow this. Anyway, I thought the titling, again, didn't really fit for Rockville Center, and so I wanted to bring that up.
Is that what everybody's thought process is?
I'm fine with changing the title and making it more of an umbrella, not so specific to one group, because they are an exclusive group versus everything else. I don't know if that would just be community-based clubs, or, I feel like that's kind of confusing because they're not, a parent organization might not consider themselves like a club.
Right.
I don't know if that's the right terminology, but I do think it should just be a singular policy, that includes any kind of parent group we have or may have in the future, and not specifically naming them out.
But this specifically says, if you read the beginning of it, it's already excluded what you're concerned about, which is the scholarships. It doesn't address scholarships. It says, booster clubs or other related organizations or clubs may be created to promote community support, raise funds for specific school activities or programs. These groups may not discriminate, and then it goes on. So, it's, it's the activities or the programs, this isn't the scholarship portion of events. This is, if we're going to raise funds, so this particular policy would relate to booster clubs or other clubs, because we have a booster club.
Right, but we have one booster club, and this is saying booster clubs, we don't have booster clubs. I'm just talking about terminology.
But we do, we have like the Huddle or the, or the LAX, there are a few of them that are out there that raise money.
That's my point. So, I think the point is we're trying to cap, a title that captures all of them.
Okay, so we'll have to go to the Board of Education, recognizes that.
I don't know what that title is, but.
I don't know if it's like parent-sponsored, something, I don't know what the last word would be, but because it could be the booster club, it could be the Cyclone Club, it could be sponsor of the arts, it could, those are all considered these parent-based clubs, but because we have one that's exclusively called booster club.
Correct, this is not right.
If it wasn't called booster club, then it wouldn't matter, but they are, so, maybe it's just parent-sponsored or parent-based organizations.
I guess that's why they did community.
Is there a legal, Allison, is there a legal reason why booster clubs are mentioned here from the New York State Code or from, or from Erie One Bosse's? Is there a reason that most of these policies say booster clubs?
I think because many school districts have more than one, they're sport-specific.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Again, we haven't looked at this one since, you know, it's 20-year-old policy, it should be representative of what is made up of an our district.
Right, Mr. Branowski made that point in our last meeting, so oftentimes, we take the template from Erie One, but then we also have to craft it to fit within legal parameters, of course, what, what reflects Rockville Center.
So, if that's what the majority wants to do, well, we can reconfigure the title and bring it back next time.
As long as it's clear that in changing the title, all of those groups, including the booster club, are subject to this policy, whether it's the Huddle Club or the, whatever, Friends of RVC LAX, whatever they're going to call themselves, all groups that are raising money are subject to this policy and the approval of where the funds are going through the district.
So, we're striking booster club and how, what are we calling it?
Well, she said she's going to go back.
We're going to look at it and we'll, we'll make a recommendation.
She'll give us a title.
Is it booster club is only in the one spot?
No, it's in the body as well.
Yeah, we'll have to rephrase that in there as well a couple times.
Other than that, the language, is there any issue with the language as we've changed it and put it into, it's a stage one?
It references the form there, so, I know we're talking about that next, I'm assuming, but.
We'll bring up the format. Should we, in other policies, we have, the form is named, has a number, not an S. Should we, in other policies, we have, the form is named, has a number, not necessary?
I don't think it's necessary. We can do it. Sometimes it's part of a regulation instead of the policy.
Yeah, it might be 3260R.
If you want it numbered separately, you can.
Well, it should be F because it's a form. The regulation usually tells you how to like carry it out.
So 3260F?
F, that would be the form.
I'm thinking it's a placeholder for it, then.
Yep, nope, if someone's looking for it, a table of contents, then it would stand out.
Yep.
And that also has to, all the Booster Club has to be stricken out of that.
That is all, even though this is not in red, this is all, that form is all new?
Yes. This is the first time we're seeing the form.
I'm sorry, are we moving on from 3260 to the form now?
I think, I'm just trying to tell you back and forth.
No, it's two separate things.
This is separate?
You have to look at them separately, right? On the agenda, aren't they supposed to be 3260 and then 3260F?
Typically, yes. That's the way we've always done it in the past.
So that's why I'm asking, are we moving on from 3260 or, I'm just wondering what stage we're going to leave this at?
Could we move 3260 to stage two with the caveat that we're changing the title of it to include a broader-based name? And anywhere within the language that is narrowly referred to as Booster Club will include that broader-based name that we come up with?
Yes.
Yes?
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with moving it and seeing what it looks like before we move it again.
Stage two for that one?
For a letter, I think it's G now, the last, where it starts, Groups Wishing to Meet.
Okay.
With the red line at the end of that, in addition, a representative of the organization should.
Yeah.
And then it says must. I don't know which one.
We changed it to must, so the should should be gone.
And then meet with superintendent or athletic director, I think it should say or...
So we're striking should?
Should and first.
Should is must.
Organization...
Must is on the next line, it's just in blue, so it doesn't stand out quite as much.
Right.
Should first meet with the superintendent.
I have it reading should and must, that's why it wasn't...
No, wait, so we're striking should, was there something else?
Yeah, and then it says superintendent and/or athletic director, maybe we should just say appropriate, like the superintendent, if it's not the athletic director, maybe it's a different administrator or appropriate personnel or appropriate administrator.
You could say superintendent or designee.
Right, because not all parent groups are athletic-related.
Correct, that's the conversation we were having.
Yep.
So superintendent...
Or designee.
Or the superintendent's designee.
Mm-hmm. I'm fine with that.
And then you'd strike athletic director as well because the superintendent can designate the athletic director.
Yep.
And then it could go to stage two.
All right, so we're moving into stage two for the next meeting. The form, 3260F, which isn't named yet, that's what we'll call it. Of course, we're going to strike out all Booster Clubs. What's everybody's opinion? It's the first time we're really seeing it. Mr. Bordelski, have you any opinion on it?
I would just say remove my email address so you don't have to worry about changing the form in the future.
That would be good.
And then obviously, the title would go back to the reference of whatever we call the group.
Right, whatever the policy title is should be reflected in the form.
Right.
Yep.
Any other changes there? We'll move that to stage two along with the policy.
So just, the, on the, sorry, on the second page then, if it's superintendent or designee, then the superintendent or designee's approval, is that what we're looking for? Or does the superintendent have to be the final approval?
Well, the superintendent's designee is only on that contribution part.
Right.
So it's just superintendent?
The superintendent needs to approve it.
Right.
Right.
Because it says date transmitted to central office, too.
Yep. I guess I'm just wondering, like, where, where on this form does it have any other eyes signed off on? So if it did go through a principal or an athletic director or a director of the arts, I think it's missing that level of oversight. So it should be from that club. Then it should be to the person that's kind of directly responsible for the club. And then finally, because by the time I get to the superintendent, that person should feel good about knowing it's been through these eyes already to get to me, and now I can sign off on it. I think it's missed, for me, it's missing something.
Do you think in the building principal?
Depending on what the community group is. I mean, if it's sponsored by the arts, Dr. Zouar.
Yeah, it could be a direct director, it could be direct, right, it could be director of the arts.
Right, like, as a superintendent, would you feel comfortable signing off on it just because the parent group signed off on it? Or would you feel like you needed another level of oversight?
I think there should be another, another level.
That's what I think, too.
I'd almost like to see like the bottom three lines where it goes date transmitted to central office be separate of the initial table so that it's clear, like, there should be two tables there. So like, date transmitted to central office, superintendent's approval and date of approval is its own.
So that's almost like on a form where it says office?
Yeah, like on the bottom, so it's completely separate, just those last three lines.
And then adding one level of oversight.
Yeah, the final line being like where it says...
Yeah, after signature of Booster Club or Community-Based Club, after that, there probably should be a line and a date for, maybe just administrator.
Yep.
And you just, just the line of his district?
The designee, superintendent's designee, because that's what it says in the policy, right?
It's not in place of, though, like an or.
It's an at.
Because it officially needs the superintendent, we're saying, no matter what.
Right.
This needs to sign off, but I think it just is that level of, it's past this other person's inspection and they approve of this before it gets to you.
I think administrator is fine.
I think just administrator because it could be the building administrator or one of the directors.
Is that enough just to write approval of administrator? Does it need to be more specific?
Well, it's still following the steps of the policy, so...
I think administrator...
But I think the policy has the superintendent's designee as the wording, so it should match.
Well, that would be the administrator.
Right, but the wording should match in the form and the policy so there's no confusion over the two different groups.
The superintendent's designee is in the section about acceptance of gifts, and the form has to do with events. So I think you're okay with having a little bit of different wording there.
Okay.
Okay.
So administrator?
Mm-hmm.
Approval of administrator.
Okay.
We'll move that to two for the next meeting. All right, so that's the first one. 7450 is on stage one, fundraising by students. Our question last time revolved around all rules of policy except the sports teams, adding that to this. That was a concern?
Did this policy have a form made to go with it as well? I think that was one of the main questions I had, was there really should just be, you know, a universal type of a form. I mean, similar to the one that community groups raised, because if this is being done by students, they're going to be associated to some kind of a club or a sport team, I would think. So I would like to see there be a form that goes along with this so that we understand what they're raising money for and that coaches are aware of fundraising as well.
Does anybody else have the form that was submitted? I guess Carol produced this?
Yeah, Carol did it. I've made some modifications to it because I was trying to look at it in terms of an overall form. I'm not sure if it should be two separate forms, one form for athletic teams, one form for extracurricular clubs. We could put it, could put it on one, and you have either team or club, and then you have coach or advisor. You have athletic director or principal for signatures, so most of the other information is pretty much the same, what the funds will be used for, the activity requested, the duration of the activity, when it was requested, amount of funds seeking to raised.
Can we see? I don't know if anybody else has. I don't know why they have it.
No, we just, that's an, that's an older form.
So is this what we're getting now, the proposed form or an old form?
The proposed form that Mr. Bartels...
This isn't, yeah, it's in the process. I don't know if this is a final version, but it's...
Allison, do you have a copy of this?
No.
Thank you.
I wonder if they're going to run out.
Are we looking to add this as 7450F? Is that the purpose?
Erica did ask for that.
Right.
She asked for a form to go on.
So then we have to look at this, again, separately from 7450?
Yes.
Right.
So anybody have an issue with the language in 7450? Well, we do definitely have to change the language in the last, all the rules of this policy and apply to all Rockville Center's school district sports teams.
Where are you, Mr. Hertsey?
The last paragraph in there is a red line from last meeting, or two meetings ago, on 7450.
Right, because I think that they modified it to be extracurricular clubs and athletics where it had been formerly about sports teams, and we had mentioned at the last meeting that it was not only about sports. So I think that they amended that.
Yep.
I think there was also a concern with if donors are anonymous. I think at the last meeting, when Carol was at the mic, she was saying that the coaches would still be able to see or, to the point, the person who oversees the club, who's the stipended advisor, and we had a problem with that, with people being able to see what kid is raising what amount of money. So not only that they be anonymous in terms of whatever device we're using, because some of the complaints were that online, the cheer page, people could see who raised what. And it was clear for everyone, the public and the other kids, to see who raised what amount of money, which could be problematic, and we all agreed. I think it was brought up as well that it wouldn't be appropriate for the coach or advisor to know which kids are raising what amount. It should be anonymous.
How do you do that if it's like an elementary school fundraiser? How does that?
What, to me, the way this reads is that they must be kept anonymous, meaning that they're not going to be publicly listed, but I didn't take that to mean that nobody would ever know who raised it. I mean, even this says there can be no listing of donors or amounts. That's how I took the anonymous part.
Right, but the issue was brought up at the mic that the coaches would be able to see who was raising. It was coaches because it was Carol that was discussing it, I'm not singling them out. But that issue was brought up, that if one child is raising an exorbitant amount of money and a coach sees that or an advisor sees that, we want to avoid the currying of any favor by one family who's raising a ton of money. So we wanted it to be anonymous.
Is it, is that possible? I guess is my question. Do we know if that's possible? Can we say with certainty that it can be that anonymous? I don't, I don't know that I feel comfortable saying we can assure that. We can assure that it doesn't get listed via policy.
Yeah, I think the way it's written in four, I think that's covered there, I would hope. But I don't know that it's possible to keep anonymous.
I'm more, I would, I'm more comfortable with this language of it not being posted, and I think that that was the purpose of it, that it's not, you know, we all make donations to different things and they ask, do you want your name withheld or whatever? That's the way I took that, where no names would be published. But I don't know that we can assure complete anonymity.
Well, it depends on who's collecting the funds. So if you have a club and the president of the club or the captain of the team is collecting checks, then people do know who's giving what. That's the problem. So who's overseeing the fundraising effort and who's collecting the funds?
How is it possible for any organization for there to never be one central person who knows this information? That's what I'm trying to understand.
There could be a central person, but who is that person? Is it the team captain? Is it a child who's collecting? Like, that, to me, wouldn't be appropriate, you know? It's one thing to say there's a cheer page, we all agreed that was not something that should be repeated, where the world who donated can look at it and see. It's another thing to, I understand what you're saying, I'm not saying it can be completely anonymous. Someone has to receive the money.
Right.
And keep accounting of it and...
Right.
But should it be a child?
Yeah, but like at high school level, we do ask our children to be at that level because it's teaching them responsibility. Red and blue, they know all the money that people have given in and keep accounting of that. Not that it's, it's not a fundraiser.
But it's not fundraising.
It's not a fundraiser.
It's not fundraising. It's who laid out money for what, and they have to keep receipts, and then the receipts get reimbursed.
Don't know. I don't have any...
I think I'm just confused on the implication there. So if somebody knows it, what's the problem, I think? If it's not being, it's not being publicly put out on a grand scale, what's the problem with a centralized person knowing who donated? I think I'm just missing, like, what's the problem?
Well, if you have a child who is the president of something or the captain of a team, and they're collecting the funds, they know who gave and who didn't. Instead of an administrator or a club, what do we call them? Advisor.
I understand, but you started that conversation with saying the coach. So what's the problem if the coach knew? What's the implication?
I guess the implication, what was said at the last meeting was if coaches or advisors, people making decisions about who does what in a club or in a group or in a team, know what child is contributing the largest amount of money, that could be a problem. I don't know how to, I don't know how to get around it. I'm simply saying it was brought up at the last meeting.
Okay, but I think that, again, we're getting to the point of making an insinuation that there's a connection between how much money a student is fundraising and their status in an organization. And I don't...
I think that that's one of the concerns that parents who've written in and parents who spoke brought up. That's why I'm addressing it.
I understand that somebody brought that up.
Not just one person.
Okay, a couple. But we are now, I'm just, I'm really concerned. We're just getting to the point now where we're not trusting our adults. We're not trusting our people who are running these organizations. There is no, we do not have any documented issue of a student's ability to fundraise or not, or not, or, you know, ability not to fundraise impacting their ability to be on a team or be on, in a play or be in a club. We're kind of making an insinuation that because somebody knows who donated what, that that's affecting the children somehow in a negative way. And I think we all agree that that's not what we're trying to do here, that we're obviously making sure that there's checks and balances and that, but we're, I feel like there's just an insinuation that I'm not comfortable with, with that. I think somebody's going to have to know who donated what. I don't think it's a problem. I think as long as it's not being posted and it's not being, you know, used to shame anybody, I don't agree that an administrator or a coach or a teacher shouldn't know who's fundraised something. I don't follow it. That's my opinion.
It was brought up by parents, so it was a concern that was raised, that it did have effects, or at least the perceived effect, when a coach or someone knew how much he raised, there was the perception. It was brought up by parents, so it was a concern that was raised, that it did have effects, or at least the perceived effect, when a coach or someone knew how much he raised, there was the perception. So I'm simply bringing it up, because it was brought up at the mic.
I think that's kind of one of the benefits of moving more towards a model of, instead of having coaches or advisors running fundraising, because again, it is one more thing to have to do, moving more towards that model of like a friends of group, where you have parents who are designated as, or have volunteered to kind of spearhead the club, the team, the organization, and they are the ones who would then have the conversation with the coach, the advisor, and say, what do you all need this year? How much money are we looking to raise? And then those parents are the ones who kind of take hold of everything, and the money is then just deposited straight into the school. It kind of takes the onus off of everyone. I know we don't have that model currently, but it could be something to look towards in the future, again, really just trying to streamline process and take the onus off of that. And then, I don't know, is there one person in the school who is designated as like the receiver of these kind of funds? Or does athletic money go to Carol and club money goes to someone else? Like, do we have someone that's designated to manage these accounts?
In the high school and the middle school for the extracurricular clubs, they have a treasurer for those. But anything fundraised by sports teams goes to Carol, goes through Carol, is deposited in trust and agency accounts.
That one person, they manage all clubs, or is it just each club has a specific?
Each club has its own advisor, and any funds raised, you know, by that club would then be deposited with the treasurer into the account.
But the treasurer, they each have their own account, the treasurer just oversees all the extracurricular accounts.
Correct. The treasurer doesn't do the fundraising, it's just the one accounting person.
Who's funneling it and taking care of it.
And that's the difference between the clubs, the extracurricular activities funds, those funds, versus the sports fundraising that goes into the trust and agency accounts, and Carol's the one who manages that.
Right, Carol acts similar to the high school and the middle school treasurer for the athletic team fundraising.
Is there any way to mold both of them to that one treasurer, so that everything is coming in with the same process and oversight? Or do they need to be two separate entities?
I think they really need to be two separate entities. You know, one is things happening within the building, the other is, you know, through the sports, and everything kind of goes through Carol.
Yeah, and I was just wondering if there is a way to have it as that one person is kind of the holder of the accounts. But if it makes sense to keep that, that's fine. I was just wondering if it was a possibility.
How do we see this?
I'm comfortable with the way it's written for number four.
I am too.
I mean, the only thing for number four, I could say, I think it's definitely good to have donors, but maybe even expanding that to say like all proceeds or all funds raised must be kept anonymous, so that we're being specific to, we're not just going to keep who donated anonymous, but also how much each child raised is kept anonymous. I don't know if that.
Yeah, I thought that was captured under donors or amounts, but if you want to, we can make it more clear.
Making it more explicit, that it's not just donors, but also proceeds.
I think it is captured in the parentheses. If you want to add it in the first part as well, I'm fine with that, because it is picked up, but.
Yeah, I just, I think some people could misread it as like the amount that, like the donor's name or the amount the donor gave.
Yeah.
Where if we say proceeds and donors, then at least we're kind of capturing all of it, that it's just completely anonymous.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So maybe we just change it to all proceeds must be kept anonymous, there can be no listing of donors or amounts? So switching that word donors to proceeds?
Mm-hmm. The only thing that I don't think is right in saying that is that, that's not, I know what you're saying. But I don't know if it's being captured the right way, because you can't keep proceeds anonymous when you're supposed to be reporting what you're using them for, right? So to.
Or maybe individual.
No, I know what you mean, but we have to find the right wording to capture what you're saying, because if you say all proceeds must be kept anonymous, and the club raises $6,000 and it's supposed to be used for this purpose, that can be kept anonymous.
So how can we say that then?
That's supposed to be the opposite, right? We're supposed to be reporting that.
So all.
Do you want donations?
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Lovely. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's late, it's hard to have a book cabinet at nine o'clock at night.
I knew what you were trying to say, we just had to find the right one.
Yeah, no, that I think feels better, because then it covers everything. I'm fine with the rest of the language.
Me too. Yep.
We'll move that to two for the next meeting.
Yes.
Is everyone okay with moving to two?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah.
7450-F.
Again, I would say it shouldn't be athletic director slash building principal, but just maybe administrator approval, just in case it's not one of those people, right? Robert, is there a scenario where it could be somebody that's not a principal or the A.D.?
Zouar?
I mean, right, that's, we're already missed out on the arts.
So can we put director slash building principal?
What about advisor?
Or just administrative?
Right, because what if there's an advisor, a club advisor, that's not a building principal or a director?
We don't want advisors to be doing that. It's higher than them. It's either the director of, like, the director of the arts, the athletic director, or the building principal. It's not the advisors.
Right, so then I think what I'm saying is almost what I said about the last thing, it's missing a level, maybe, right? Because if it's a club and there is an advisor, and the advisor is not the approval portion, by the time it's getting to the approval stage, how does the person who's approving it know that the advisor is approving?
You have the coach or advisor's name at the top, but you need their signature at the bottom approving it.
Coach or advisor.
Right, but they're not signing off on it. That's just like, it could just say Robert Bartels.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you need their signature.
So that'll go?
Above athletic director.
Right, well, we have to change that line.
Right.
Director or building principal, I'm fine with, but it needs another level.
I'd also like there to be something where there's like a target of how much money we're looking to fundraise, you know, because it just says funds will be used for, but are we looking to raise $100, $8,000? Because I think that's important to know too, that it's not excessive.
And it then dovetails back into the wording in the policy itself, where they don't want excessive. What is excessive, right?
Yeah, so I think we need a line like above funds will be used for, like maybe target.
It's a fundraising goal.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm really doing a great job.
That's why we have you here.
I've got half the words.
Anything else? We'll move that to stage two for the next meeting. Moving on, 3271, solicitation of charitable donations from schoolchildren. This had no revisions from 2002. Any questions, concerns?
No.
All right, move that to three for the next meeting. 3273, solicitation funds from school personnel. Again, no changes.
I think Mara said these were basically just copies of the New York Code.
All right, so we'll move that to three for the next meeting. 5320, acceptance of gifts, grants, and bequests to the school district. Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Move that to three for the next meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to accept the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve board actions A through D?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Allison.